I just pulled off one day when this was over and on and just, I'll just capture some of this because this went on for two weeks. Every two minutes it was a truck.
That's good, Jay.
So yeah, that uh... Anyway, I think you get the flavor of that. So, we're here to propose a solution to that so that they can mine their gravel and we don't have a tragedy in the neighborhood. We've had some real close accidents that could have cost a life out there anyways with that, so.
Yeah, I'd like to address the safety issues. I've been out there five years. And just in that five-year period, traffic, residents come out there, I see more bikers, I see more walkers, I see more runners. I'm a biker, my wife and I ride the roads, and it's crazy what the number of vehicles we're seeing on the road and people, even families with horses walking them down the streets, you know. And what is a biker, I've noticed, there's three types of vehicles. One's a personal vehicle, and either a car or truck, then there's the ag trucks, and then there's a gravel truck. And it's interesting, there's no shoulders on these roads. So when you're going down the road, and I wear mirrors so I can see what's coming up behind me, and if there's an oncoming car and there's a personal vehicle, either a truck or a car, you can always see, count on, most of the time, 99% of the time, the car will pull over or slow down and wait until a car passes and then they'll move in the other lane, go around. The same, that same thing happens with the ag trucks. They'll wait and then they'll go around. But the gravel truck is different. And I always says, why is it different? They see a car coming on, look out because you better get as far over as you can because that gravel truck's gonna go right on through. And I mean literally, I can reach out and touch some of the gravel trucks go by. You know, someday somebody's gonna get killed on that road with that. I think the reason for the gravel trucks is they get paid by the load. And that's, they're under time. They want to get down, get back and get another load. So I think that's one of the problems. The other problem is, is the school buses. I talked with Kelly Dial, the transportation supervisor for District 25, and her, if she adding concerns, she says, definitely. She says, I've got a numbers of stops out there where we pick up kids. She says there's six buses running routes up in that area. And we, she pulled out a map and she looked at it and she says, okay, this is where they're going. I said, yeah, this is where they're going. She says, yeah. And she had a really interesting comment. She says, you know, Jerry, you better remember that we carry one of the most valuable loads, cargo, out there on the roads, and we've got to be careful. There was also the mailman. I asked him, her one day, I says, what do you think about all this traffic going on during that December period? She says, I'm really in fear that something's going to happen out here, and I'm gonna get hit from behind, and it's not gonna be good. So, anyway, so what could go wrong? Well, in the last year, three things that I can identify went wrong. Number one, there was a gravel truck at the top of Venus and Rio Vista that turned over. A car pulled out, the gravel truck driver, credit to him, he was very alert, he took evasive actions, and he actually rolled his truck. He rolled his truck trying to avoid the car, still hit the car, and thank goodness everybody was okay in this accident. But it could have been a lot worse. You know, trucks, these gravel trucks just can't stop on a dime. They're not like your car. It takes them a distance, and sometimes people forget that, that are driving, and the one corner is kind of blocked and blindsided. So when the car pulled out, that was the result on that. The second thing that happened was a leady gravel truck, little gravel truck, paving truck coming down Rio Vista, or Tahi, went off into the ditch, the irrigation ditch, and shut off our water for the remainder of the year. I had a picture of that, but I didn't, I didn't get that, bring it. And the third one, I get a call one day from my neighbor down in West Tahi, or Rio Vista Estate, and he says, Jerry, you wouldn't believe what I saw. I says, down on Rio Vista in Chubbick, he says, I went to turn the corner and I stopped, there was a 50-ton gravel truck in there kind of sideways, and a car was underneath. So this, all three of these things happened in one year, and they all involved gravel trucks on that. So Jeff, as you and I talked just briefly, I says, I don't know whose bridge that is, and you said you didn't either. So I went looking. And I contacted Power County, talked to a couple of people there, that's not their bridge, and the road from the bridge on out west of Siphon is not theirs either. But the road on Tank Farm Road is their, their road. So I got ahold of, he sent me over to talk to Pete Bronco, who heads up the roads and bridges on their end. And nice guy, was very friendly, very helpful. And we talked about the problem, and what about getting that bridge up and going. He says, it's on our list, but it's way at the bottom, it's not a priority, so it's gonna be a while. And he says, if you want, I'll try to get that moved up, but he says, it may take some time. So I went back and I talked to Nick Anan, and he's the Power County Supervisor of, I guess it's Road and Bridge. And he, we had a discussion, he says, yeah, he says, that's one thing we could do, if that bridge gets upgraded, he says, we'd be okay. He sees no problem with them taking trucks out that way and if it increases traffic. But he says, we're doing it now. And he says, it's not a residential area. And so he says, I don't see any problem with that. He's going to bring that up in their Monday meeting this coming week, so he'll do that. He did say that if, if bridges goes to get a bridge put in there, he says, right now's the time to apply. They just did it, they went through it. And he said, it takes, he says, you apply now in the fall, and you get approved in spring, and he says it takes, he figured it'd take two years for this done. So, I mean, the longer we wait on this, if that's the goal, to get that bridge replaced, it used to be a 50-ton bridge, is what I found out, and it's been derated over the years, now it's 10 tons. But anyway, if the time's now, that we could do this, if we're gonna do this. But anyway, I thought, probably in your hands and not ours to push this thing.
Okay. Kyle, any thoughts?
Um, like they said, Kyle Burmester, Public Works Director. That is from Loffen on down to the bridge, and then from there out is the tribe, the rest, the whole Siphon Road. And that's great if, you know, if Power County's good and whatever, and for you guys to visit with the owners and see if that causes any problem with them. But otherwise, that's a major collector road, it's built for the traffic. We see the same kind of traffic all through that whole Chubbick area, whether it's potato trucks, grain trucks, or a lot of gravel trucks. So we're seeing the same thing all the way around out there, but.
Is there anything we can do in the short term that could aid the situation in some way?
So like, as we talked, it is on our pave, so we're doing our little section through there. We've did some chip sealing around, but that's actually getting paved. And what we could do to help with safety is make the shoulders a little bit bigger, that people can get off and stuff like that. But that was kind of our plan.
Okay. What's your timeframe for looking at that? You doing that now out there?
Um, yeah, we're paving, we won't be that road till probably next week.
But it's on this?
Yeah, it's on this year's schedule, yes.
And then, so you're, tentatively right now, you're looking at widening the shoulders?
Yes.
But that's just a minor section of the road.
That's just from Rio Vista to Loffen.
Yeah, okay.
That, that section through there.
We can, we don't have a lot of influence with the tribe, telling them what to do.
We can reach out and have a conversation, for sure.
Yeah. This isn't the only road in the county that we have these same concerns and problems. Price cut off down there, and McCam and I get that all the time. Residents want to take it off Google, they want to take, make sure that Utahns can't drive on the road. I mean, I've been hit with a lot of stuff there, so it's not just a one area deal. And I can tell you, the busiest road in Bennett County right now is the one right in front of my house in Rapid Creek, since they've diverted all traffic off the interstate. And I have a lot of big trucks coming in front of my house, so I feel your pain. The challenging part is, everybody pays taxes. And to regulate who can go on and off a road that is a main artery is almost impossible. I mean, everybody.
From a, from a safety standpoint, is there something we can do on those corners so those trucks don't have to swing quite as wide? Can we shorten the inside of that corner a little bit, make it easier for them to turn?
Yeah, that's something we definitely can look at and try to make that, we have a certain amount of right-of-way.
Right.
To work with. But like I say, that intersection's built the same way as all the rest of the intersections out there.
Right. And that's, that's a pretty busy intersection.
And it's a four-way stop, right?
Yeah, it is a four-way stop.
So, and that is our intersection, or is that on?
Thoughts?
That upgrading a bridge is almost possible without total. Because I've had, in order to upgrade the bridge, is it anything short of actually removing the girders underneath and replacing them?
I'm real surprised that they haven't, I don't know what the condition of that bridge is, but there's the leading Idaho Bridge Funds going on right now that, like I said, there's two bridges in Bennett County that were getting replaced. So there is a lot of money out there right now in grant funds, so I'm surprised they haven't, if it's in poor shape like that, if it's, if it's weight restricted, why that's not on that list, I don't know.
I know there's, there used to be, because we replaced the bridge, but there was some matching funds from ITV.
Yeah, there's a, there's another bridge fund that you can get around $100,000 each year.
But here again, that's Fort Hall. But I think we need to continue that dialogue with them and express, because it not only benefit Bennett County, but Power County, and the traffic going in and out of there is getting busier all the time with the new subdivisions going down through there. But short of that, I agree, maybe we need to build up that intersection to where they're not gonna have to swing clear out. I think all we're gonna do is solve a bunch of small problems until that bridge. But I'm all for solving the small problems, the shoulder work, until we can. But I think we need to apply some urgency to Fort Hall and that. What can we do to help you?
Because like the one bridge, word, one of the bridges we're getting replaced is 2.5 million.
Yeah. As I say, there's some comments there.
It's not like in a maintenance budget.
But it needs to get on the docket, especially with matching, if there's some matching requirements in there. We gotta do something, I agree with that. But until then, I agree with Commissioner Moser that let's do what we can do with that intersection, and do what we do with the sides of the road. Maybe at least express some concerns to those fuckers and say, if something happens, you guys are gonna be liable. I think we can reach out and do a campaign with them, and just say, you know, nobody wants to lose a life, but if somebody loses a life and you guys are liable, you may be buying a new bridge. So, but I think those are all of the things that I would recommend that we try to do. Because it's not a, it's not a quick fix, not with a bridge that's been condemned, basically, let's use that word, because that's what it is. It's condemned at that weight level. And I've seen that before, and it will take two years.
So at this point in time, that sounds kind of like a direction that we're willing to travel, is do some shoulder work, do some intersection work, reach out to the tribe, see if we can have a conversation there, prod them along, reach out to the trucking companies and talk to them a little bit, see what we can do there. But I know it doesn't solve the problem, but that's what we can do at this point in time. So, has the tribe got connections to apply for this money, and who's gonna, does it gonna be the joint thing, or is the tribe's gonna be the?
The tribe has more opportunities than any other group.
So they would be the best one to tap?
Correct, and probably quicker.
Okay.
Yeah. And when I talked to Pete, he didn't seem resistant to that. I think it just, instead of me, you know, you guys be talking to him.
And maybe notch from, you know, commissioners would just help them realize, yeah, I gotta keep that on my front burner. Yeah. Well, we'll commit to that, and Kyle will commit to the other, and we'll go from there, see what we can do.
Perfect. I appreciate that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Hey, thank you guys for the time and the opportunity. We had a whole lot of people that asked for us in the neighborhood that says, can you do this? And that's why we're here today.
We appreciate you taking the time to come and bring this to our attention, so thank you.
Thank you too, for your help.
Thanks so much. Okay, thank you. Mr. Kendall?
Good morning.
Dan Kendall, Facilities Director, just giving a quick monthly update. Maintenance-wise, we're just kind of playing catch-up from being gone this summer, but I think everything's gone very well. We did replace the closer on that exit, on the new entrance there, because the wind would blow and it wouldn't shut correctly. So we got that replaced this week. So hopefully that'll solve that issue. As far as projects go, what we have going on, the boilers are coming along nicely, they should be done next month, no problems there. The YDC, we are moving them in. We started yesterday, we should finish up today. Couple of things that came up, I, the house had an antenna on it, and it belongs to an alarm company. And at some point, I think there was a handshake agreement that if you can put that antenna on the house, if you'll run the indoor arena off of that. But we no longer have that fire suppression system in there. So I told them, they would have to come to you guys to be able to put the antenna on the new building. I'd rather not have it on there, and I don't see, there's no contract, there's no nothing. So I told them to get ahold of you guys.
They're welcome to come talk.
Yeah. I don't want to put a hole in our brand-new roof, so.
Neither do I.
But the guys up there were amazing. Like, there was pallets and pallets of furniture, and they got them together so quick. It was really nice to have all those helping hands. They did a great job. And the abatement on the house will start tomorrow, so. Little bit of a mess up there, you know, moving in half of it and don't have a parking lot yet, but it's, it's going good. I mean, really, the inside of the building on the YDC side is pretty well done, too. Just gotta get the parking lot in, and we're good to go.
You never had a parking lot up there before, anyway?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're right at home.
Quite a dust pile.
Yeah, it's pretty dusty.
Across the street.
Yeah, yeah. But it's really, it's really nice to see them have their own offices, and it's really, it's really nice in there. The exhibit building in Downey, we guys have a couple more invoices to pay. The overall budget is right on track where we knew it would be. They did have a janitorial company come in and clean it up after the fair, and it looks actually better than when they moved in, so I was really happy to see that. I drive down once a week just to check on it and make sure everything's going okay. But I had a couple of questions for you guys. Right now, I have the contractor that put the sod down, they're mowing it once a week, and I've been told that the mower that Downey has isn't probably good enough to mow the lawn. It's more of like a weed mower. So I just wanted to make sure you guys knew, the contractors mowing it. I'll continue with that until you guys tell me to stop doing that. But I don't know what the alternative is right now.
And do we, we don't have a contract with them, though?
No.
So.
They just said, well.
Either, either way, we need to decide, either have a contract with them or get a decent mower for the fair to provide that service.
Yeah.
Which I think they can, they have time to do that.
That company that laid the sod mows the church there in Downey, they said, until you figure out what you're gonna do, we'll just stop by on our way through town and we'll mow it real quick for you. So, it looks really good.
We're meeting with the Fair Board on Thursday, so we can talk about that on Thursday with them.
Okay. I didn't put any access controls on there, I didn't really know how we're gonna use the building or how, who's running it.
Thursday, you need to be here for that meeting.
Okay. So right now, it's just generic, we can, we can change that anytime, I just went basic for now. And I wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about, like, spending maintenance money on that building. It could be a lot easier for me to be able to do that, but I just wanted to be, make sure it was okay. There's annual things that will come up, like fire suppression inspections and backflow inspections, and, you know, extinguishers, all that kind of stuff. I don't want to pass that on to the Fair Board. I just figured we'd pay for all the other buildings, but it's up to you guys, I'd just like to go ahead and do that. But I didn't want to cause any trouble spending maintenance money before I talk to you.
That needs to be part of the discussion with the Fair Board, so that they know exactly who's doing what and the layer and how.
Okay. And then maybe a Thursday, too, we talk about the storage containers. There's three there right now, and the one that I was using is empty, and then they have the other two. So I do pay for two of those every other month, so maybe Thursday, we can bring that up and hopefully get rid of a couple of them and maybe buy one of them, or whatever you guys think is the best. But I think they need one. It's full.
Well, I don't want the old mouse-infested stuff in the new building.
Yeah, I agree. And then I, I'd love to continue to improve it. I didn't put sidewalks in on purpose that would go to the road, because Downey doesn't have a sidewalk to tie into. So I didn't want a sidewalk just running to nowhere, and I would love for it to be ADA compliant. And there is a way, but I think one thing that we could look at is getting that right-of-way resolved or off of the parcel map. I didn't want to put a sidewalk through it, so just something we can work on maybe, so that we can put a sidewalk in at some point. And I haven't heard from them about taking that section of floor out that needs replaced inside of the building. I did reach out to them last week, and they'd said they would schedule it as soon as they could, but it's not very big.
I think part of that discussion is, we need to figure out all we have on our checklist, plus the ball field and stuff, and then we need to invite the city of Downey here and talk with their mayor and city council.
Yeah. Without a sidewalk on the city side, there's no way to make it actually ADA compliant, because you could never have a ramp or anything to get onto our sidewalk. So I didn't want to put a sidewalk in and then have to tear the sidewalk out, so I just left it the way it was for now, until we figure it out.
Okay.
I think that's all I got for you. I think everything has gone well this summer while it was gone. We didn't have any major breakdowns, and things are looking pretty good. Excited to be back.
We're glad to have you back.
Thank you.
So that, that door, you're talking about the Sixth Street entrance, that you, the closer?
Mm-hmm.
Boy, that's hard for a lot of people to push that door open.
Okay.
I watch older people, you know, and I know there's probably a button for them to release that button.
Yeah.
But even on top of that, I've watched, there's going in and out of there, that's a hard door to push open.
Okay, we'll get that adjusted.
So I just don't know whether it's an adjustment or whatever it is.
It was probably a combination of not being able to get that second door to shut when the wind blows. I bet they have that adjustment off, so we'll get that readjusted. And now that we have a stronger closer, it was literally every time the wind would blow, the door wouldn't shut, so people could come in the exit.
Right.
So we'll get that taken care of. I think we should make an adjustment at some point, too. I think some fine tuning of the two doors, but.
You can do it.
Oh, yeah, we'll get it fixed. Like, I want, I want it to be perfect, and it's just not quite what I want. I think if the two doors were a little bit farther apart, I think it would resolve some of the issues, and I think it'd be not that big of a deal to move the first door back. The concern is, you can almost hold the one door open, and the other door would be open as well. So I just want to make sure on a security point, you know that we're taken care of.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Tristan?
Tristan Borkwin, Assistant Planning Director.
Helen Jensen, Planning Director.
Dylan Havens, Landfill Manager.
I wasn't gonna speak, because she's gonna do the presentation, so.
So the first thing we have before you is just a little bit of an overview of the floodplain up at the landfill. Just to give a little bit of background, in the last couple of months, we've had a property owner just below the landfill that has purchased some land to try to build a church, and they have some floodway and floodplain on their property that they're trying to work through with our office, as well as the State Floodplain Coordinator, to be able to cross that floodway. And as part of that discussion, the State Floodplain Coordinator came out and looked at the landfill with us to see if there was anything that we needed to do with our new stormwater pond to help with that property just below the landfill. And while he was up there, he noticed that we have some compliance issues with the landfill that we need to get resolved. So in May, we had a stormwater pond capacity assessment done, and Dylan was able to give me that report so that I could pass it on to the State Floodplain Coordinator, and he was able to review that to determine some of our options on how to move forward. So I have the report in the packet with you, if you have any questions on what's in there. Ultimately, I think the best thing to do, and the State Floodplain Coordinator talked to me last week about it, would be to try to schedule a time that he could come here. He's in Boise, so he said he's more than willing to come here, meet with all of us to discuss what the best path forward would be. It sounds like we might need a letter of map revision and maybe some additional engineering studies that we would need to go through to correct some of that.
So, any other questions before I go?
Inviting. Let's have a field trip and have a conversation.
So my question of it is, for somebody wanting to put a building on there, how's that zoning? Can they put a building there where it's just below, because I know there's some restrictions for water use and everything else just below that because of the mitigation problem. Can they build on that piece of ground?
Yes, so that parcel is owned residential suburban. What they're wanting to do is put a church there. And churches are permitted in all zones, all, except for your industrial zones and stuff. But, so that's what they're hoping to do. And one of their issues is that where they're wanting to cross to put a parking lot is in the floodway, but it doesn't really make sense for it to be in the floodway. We were looking at the original flood insurance study that was done in the 70s, and the commissioners at the time wanted floodway there because of some drainage from the landfill, but there's really no reason why the floodway should have been placed there at all. So we just feel the best thing to do would be correct some of those issues that were done years and years ago to make it more feasible for the landfill to continue to grow as well as the properties below it.
Well, just the flood insurance. I mean, if it isn't a floodway, why have flood insurance on it?
Right.
In the plain itself.
So this does impact the mosquito and the weed and mosquito damage as well?
Correct. Yep.
Yep, I think that's our next step, inviting and see what we need to do and go from there.
Perfect. Sounds great.
Part two.
Part two. You're, you're all set.
Thank you. That was hard work.
Thanks, Dylan.
All right.
Way to contribute, Dylan.
The second thing we have is furniture for our office. So now that we have emergency services moving to the Seacog building, a bunch of their grant funding was used to purchase equipment and furniture for our conference room. So I put together a quote of everything that they're taking and everything that we would need. This would be for any development meetings we have with property owners as well as council meetings. And then we did get a more updated quote on that rolling TV from Dex and it looks like it will be closer to ninety-five hundred dollars instead of that top end of fifteen thousand that I had put in there. It did also include some different options. Right now, we have an owl camera. I don't know that that's entirely necessary for what we do, so I had IT give us a quote for a different webcam option if you wanted to go with something a little more economical. I did also have a conversation with Christie yesterday about where some of this money could come from and I had Elise go through our remaining budget for this year and it looks like we have about ten thousand dollars that we could cover just from our budget.
What was your new final estimate for everything?
For everything?
Yeah.
It would be about twenty, about eighteen thousand.
Okay, I was gonna say, Elise and I talked eighteen.
Yeah.
Little over eighteen thousand.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that didn't change.
Yep.
And then, did you talk to Adam about forward compatibility as we talk about master planning and redoing everything out there? This is all forward compatible?
Yes, we did. And even just for council meeting chairs as well as for attendees, we made sure to find something that would work for a new building if we did decide to go that route as well.
Okay. Thoughts?
Twelve thousand dollar rent just went to twenty thousand dollars plus.
Okay, good thought.
Well, I'm just concerned again with, hopefully in the next year, so we were gonna have this discussion anyway, you know, as far as moving stuff into something, you know, that might be two years down the road before we all get through it, but sooner or later, we're gonna have to have that discussion anyway about if we can find a way to do it, I'm okay with it, especially if we can utilize, have your staff expand a little bit and not have them. The other question I had is, I know GIS is wall-to-wall in that little place they have, too. Is there any of their staff needing to stretch out or can we accommodate them stretching a little bit? Cause they're jammed in that, I mean, you've got, what, three, four people all standing there. I just don't, if there's a way that we could actually incorporate GIS, making it more comfortable for them, too, and maybe they've got some budget, I have no idea where they're at there. That, that's just a throwing it out as an option.
I think that GIS is a choice, cause they do have access to the office next to them that they've chosen not to.
Yeah, so, yeah, and it, and talking with them, I think they love the, I guess.
Yeah, that's what they.
I just wanna make sure we weren't making them sound like the stepchild or something out there that.
Right.
That they're not being helped out at the council.
Do you have a spot for some money or not?
So, planning and zoning can cover ten thousand of the eighteen, roughly eighteen-five. You've got contingency that we've spent a hundred and five of the two hundred thousand, so that leaves about eighty-five, well, nine hundred five thousand. You've got the county operations where you've got some excess funds and match monies and also litigation, so.
What are the, what was the contingency for?
Contingency is the two hundred thousand for letting the department's over budget, but we bought Scott's tractor over there.
Okay.
I have a forewarning, I am coming to you with about fifteen thousand dollar ask for IT to use out of contingency, cause they're gonna exceed budget authority this year.
Okay.
So there will be more money spent.
That's fun, I just shouldn't take it out of the, that's contingency right now.
We can do that, the only thing we would need to do is, it makes it easier if we do a resolution, allowing up to, say, eighty-five hundred, and in that way, the department can sign off on the invoices as opposed to me trying to get your signature.
Okay. Good on that. Okay. All right, let's travel that path then.
Perfect.
Do we need a motion on that?
Not until they sign that resolution.
Yeah, not until they get a resolution, so.
I'll work with Nancy to get that resolution done.
Okay. And then number three, your open-gub contract.
Okay, the last thing I have is the open-gub contract. I have two options in front of you today. I had them give me a twelve-month contract and a thirty-six-month contract. The only difference is, if you do sign for the thirty-six month, they lock in the rates for how much they can increase our annual bill, where if we do just a twelve-month contract, it can be up to seven percent is what they're allowed to increase every year. I think we are good to go thirty-six months, I don't foresee us changing programs anytime soon, so I think that's just up to you on whether you would rather do a twelve-month or a thirty-six month contract.
And this is specifically for the.
Permitting.
Module.
Correct.
Part of open-gub that Kyle has for last.
Correct.
Okay. Thoughts on that?
Is there a thirty-day-out non-appropriation clause for that?
There is.
Yes.
I'll throw it this morning.
Okay, I need a copy of the full contract because this may fall into spedita financial reporting.
Okay.
So is this coming out of this year's budget?
It's next year, should it? It's due in October?
Yes. Yeah, it's due October fifteenth.
And I believe our budget numbers for next year only take care of eight years as from the planning budget side. Does that make sense?
Yeah, cause you'll make three annual payments.
Mm-hmm. You can get that to her if she.
Oh, I got it. Okay.
So the three-year contract locks us in at nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, twenty-two thousand, so I guess it's twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two thousand for the three years versus sixteen thousand if we sign just a one year. Am I reading that right?
So the total for the first year is the same?
Oh, yes, okay, I see that.
The three-year just locks you into the lowest percentage increase that open-gub's allowed to.
Next two years?
Yeah.
Do.
Yeah.
I don't always buy into that. Here, for three years, we'll give you a special deal and throw you in a mixer and a knife set. You know, I think sometimes we, the way we budget year at a time, even if they say seven percent, who knows what inflation rate, it might be less than that, so.
Right.
I think I'm more comfortable with, if what we budgeted for was just a year, I think I'm comfortable with that. I, I just don't see a significant promise if it was twenty percent or whatever it is. That's just how I look at it. I just, if we budgeted for one year, unless there's something significant, I'd just need to stay with the annual.
Well, and in the last six years, I don't think they've ever done the full seven percent increase in rates for us, so.
Chances are, if they're hungry for business, they're not going to.
Yeah.
So.
Thoughts?
Doesn't matter. One year's fine with me.
Good. I'll take a motion then.
I'll make a motion, I would just pay just a one-year annual subscription to that, which has been budgeted for without changing or causing any harm.
Okay, we have a motion, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, one year it is.
Perfect.
Shanda.
I have two items before the board today. The first one is a request to dispose of Event Center office furniture. That list was prepared, the detailed list was prepared today and sent out to the Agenda Request Group for a review. As Dan mentioned, right, they got in and got moved yesterday and got things out of there, and in doing so, they realized that some of those desks and tables that were in there were not worth anything and potentially could fall apart if tried to exit the building. So the request is kind of twofold. One, not only for permission to dispose of these items that are listed, but two, that we just leave them in the house and when demoed, they will be demo.
Disposed of.
Thank you. One of those words. Disposed of, right? I'm, okay. Disposed of with the building, all in one. They'll just collapse the building, take it off the landfill and be done.
Words are really hard sometimes.
Sometimes they are.
They just don't roll.
It's like Dr. Seuss in my head for a second, I'm like, that's not a real word. So sorry.
Makes everything so hard.
So that is the request today, that these items, desks, two, five, five desks, one table and a file drawer be left in the building to be demolished. That's the word, with the building and taken to the landfill.
I was worried about some of that stuff, it's been in place for a long time.
It's been well-used and.
Yeah. Yeah. Leave it in the building, get rid of it. Yep, so I think so.
Dan doesn't have to haul it off and haul it off again. So I'd make a motion that we go ahead and leave the materials as identified in the building and go ahead and have them haul the landfill for destruction of the building.
You still have those on inventory?
No.
So.
They verified to see if there were any asset stickers and Shanda said no, so they probably just magically showed up and whenever put on.
They probably have been there longer than, than what we used to inventory.
Oh, no, we used, in nineteen ninety-two, we inventoried everything at a thousand-dollar limit.
Okay.
So.
Some of these have been there that long.
They just got missed.
Some of them are old enough to vote.
All right, we have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The second item I have is a request for payment for a CMS communications invoice. So this invoice came to be as part of the YDC building as they got in there to realize how many switches they were going to need for the security systems, for the internet and for the phone systems, and the one that we have doesn't have enough switches. This would get us through what we needed and then have a few more in case there were other items that were eventually put in, so this would give us a little room to grow as well. I did pass this along to Christie a little earlier, so I think she's got a couple different options for the board.
We're currently paying for this, these downports out of Pilt for the YDC, so I just wanna throw that in with that as well.
Good.
That way, it's all, all that whole portion of the project is.
Consistent.
The same spot.
So how's this all working? Cause some of these ports, these switches are gonna be used by the youth development centers, some of them by us. Is there any problem with the budgeting where some of it should go to the YDC and some of it to the county for the event center? I don't know whether, I mean, we're not talking gobs of money, but in, in all fairness, are we sharing that cost?
So I am.
How we do, how we doing that?
You mean on the ongoing maintenance side?
Well, or just the, the purchase of it?
It's all.
It's all part of the bid.
The whole YDC event center is all being paid for through ARPA and Pilt.
Okay, so basically, we're gonna benefit from the ongoing, I mean, these are routers or these are, the ports, it's.
A switch is what it's called, like to plug stuff into.
Yeah, it's all the cabling for all the, the computers and everything else in there.
The computers, the fiber, the phones and the security systems.
Okay, so if that's the best way for it, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I guess that's a motion.
Sounded like a motion to me, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll have us sign on that. And with that, we're gonna make one slight adjustment and we'll do the resolutions. We have two resolutions, two zero two five dash five two and two zero two five dash five three for the Rio Vista and the other one was for the validation of the North Beehive Road. Any discussion on either of those two resolutions? The Beehive Road is denying the validation and the second one is accepting the construction bond for western states, or western, Westfield Estates. Any discussion on those?
No.
Okay, I would move that we adopt both. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we have the consent agenda, is there any questions on the consent agenda?
No. Let's see.
I would entertain a motion then to approve the consent agenda.